... council members, conflicts, and the Brown Act. So, staff and input from the community, and the council makes the policy decisions on all The city council as a body is the authority, not individual members. So council members or ideas become project, council discusses them, and a quorum of members obviously decides how to proceed. So you work to understand the issues and perspectives of other council members with arriving at decisions that sometimes require compromise. And of course, you make informed decisions that are in the best interests of the city. So some basic items on conduct. You want to refrain from personal charges or criticism. We don't tend to have these issues in the city of Loma Linda. You perform your duties as established. You're informed on issues. You listen attentively to public discussion before the body, and you listen to public input before making a decision. You abide by the Brown Act, and we'll talk a little bit about the Brown Act later on. And you should avoid individual involvement in labor negotiations and personnel matters for a number of reasons. We're going to talk about the type of governance that is in this city and in most cities. But in addition to that, the council serves as the arbiter in labor and personnel matters. So you need to stay uninvolved so you can act, have I been, so you can act neutrally. And some basic things, listen, pay attention. You know, you represent the city. You are the face of the city. You want to be prepared. You want to read your agenda. If you have questions, sometimes it's good to ask those questions of the city manager prior to the meeting. You want to give staff a heads up on questions or concerns in advance so that they can be prepared to address those issues. The city manager and staff put together the agenda reports. The mayor or any individual council member can ask that an item be placed on future agendas with the consensus of a majority, and that happens pretty regularly. Members of the public can also ask that an item be placed on agenda, on a future agenda, and that's up to the council. Types of agenda items. Well, there's the ceremonial items. There are special presentations. Items on the consent calendar tend to be routine business, routine agreements, and can be passed in one motion, as you all know, unless an item is polled. And public hearings are usually required for certain types of matters. So you listen to the staff presentation. You ask any questions. You listen to public comment, and then you discuss and deliberate, all in open meeting, and you make your motions and take the vote, and you respect the outcome of the vote. So let's talk a minute about the public's right to participate. I think everybody knows, planning commissioners and council members alike, that the public has a right to address the planning commission or the city council at any meeting. And they don't have to provide their name. We ask them to because it helps with keeping the minutes and such like that. But if somebody says they don't want to tell you who they are, that's, we have to respect that. And reasonable time limits may be imposed. Usually, they're three minutes here. It's within the discretion of the mayor to grant somebody additional time if they would like. And sometimes it has to be shortened. If you have a large crowd of people and you want everybody to be able to speak, you can cut it down to two minutes. But that's about as short as you can go. So speakers can express their opinions, and they can criticize members of the council. And really, the only time you can rein in a member of the public is if they've had their three minutes and they're out of time, or they cause, their conduct is so significant that it creates, the meeting really cannot move forward. It interferes with the actual running of the meeting. So in that case, I was going to mention, there was a case in the city of Santa Cruz. The court found that the city of Santa Cruz violated the First Amendment rights of an advocate for the homeless when the mayor had him arrested for giving a Nazi salute at a city council meeting. The city spent $175,000 on the lawsuit and ended up having to pay $215,000. So they can insult you, they can do a Nazi salute, they could show up in a KKK costume, and they still have the right to speak, but only for three minutes. Okay.
So they didn't have him arrested because he exceeded the three minutes?
Apparently not. I think it was all the Nazi salute. And the last bullet point, do not engage in discussion with the speaker on non-agenda items. And I'll say later that, you know, a brief response may be appropriate, but you don't want to get into a major discussion because the item has not been agendized. And also, staff may have information about that particular issue, and you're not hearing all of that coming from the speaker. So it's best to say, "Thank you, we'll look into it," or "We'll have staff get back to So, Loma Linda is a general law city and using the council-manager form of government. So this is designed for the elected city council to set the policy, and then the city manager uses his professional expertise to manage the organization and to carry out the council direction. So the council provides the direction to the city manager. The city manager implements council policy and directs staff and day-to-day operations. And it's the responsibility of the city manager to coordinate between council and staff to assure that the effective delivery of services as guided by, or as provided by, the city council. So this is a direct quote from our municipal code. "City manager shall be the administrative head of the government of the city under the direction and control of the city council, except as otherwise provided. He or she shall be responsible for the efficient administration of all affairs of the city which are under his, under his or her control." Another quote directly from the municipal code. "The city council and its members shall deal with the administrative services of the city only through the city manager, except for the purpose of inquiry. And neither the city council nor any member thereof shall give orders or instructions to any subordinates of the city manager. The city manager shall take his or her orders and instructions from the city council only when sitting in a duly convened meeting of the city council. And no individual council member shall give any orders or instructions to the city manager." So that code section pretty much summarizes it. So, couple just items here. The city manager will sometimes have to tell you what you don't want to hear. I think that happens. And you want to, the city manager and the council should keep each other informed of issues in advance so you don't hear it from third parties. So your relationship with staff. Again, city council creates the policy, but city staff administers the policies under the direction of the city manager. So you should always work through the city manager only to get things done. Now, council members can contact the city manager or department heads directly to ask questions or clarification of, about a matter or an item, but you're not giving direction to the staff member. That comes from the city attorney. I'm sorry, from the city manager. And then if you do have concerns about a staff member, those concerns should be directed to the, to Jarb privately. And then the last bullet, again, should not direct staff to initiate any action or change course of action or prepare any report. That's to be done by, with the approval by a majority of the council at a noticed meeting.
Hey Diane, did you want us to ask, interrupt or ask questions?
Sure, sure.
Or do you want to wait and have us write them all down?
No, I should. It's, you know, be nice if the screen was over here.
Yeah. I just, a couple little things that I wanted to note. So back, a few pages back when you were talking about agendas, and you said, "Members of the public may request an item be placed on a future agenda by submitting a request in writing or by making a request during a public comment." But then I think you followed up with it. It's not here in the slide, but it requires, still requires approval of the council, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The placement of any item on the agenda would require that, well, the city manager puts items on there, but any of you, it has to be done with the approval.
Because we've had, in the past, in the recent past, we've had a number of agenda items that are just kind of starting to spring up from the public, and it kind of appears, I think at the council level, because most of us have talked about it, that we want to have some more control over that and don't want those things just to show up without some prior knowledge.
Right, right.
So we're, just so we're all kind of clear on that point.
Mayor's correct.
And then moving forward a little bit, and I'm sure other people have questions here, so I don't want to get, go too long, but when you talked about us being a general law city, we're also a charter.
We're a charter city, yes. But for all intents and purposes, we, the charter itself says we
Follow general law.
Follow the general law. But you're right, we're a charter.
Which is, which is kind of interesting because in that respect, I mean, there's some, there's some thought, and there's definitely some cities here in California that believe because they are charter cities, and not every city is, obviously, and there's only like, only about 30 or 50 of them, or some, some number, that they can, in a sense, I don't want to say defy, but they can kind of make their own rules, independent of the state. And we don't generally have that issue here, but in case anybody had the question about that and it came up, we could.
And courts have upheld that in certain situations. Yep.
So that's a, so to me, that's a good thing. That's something I'm proud of. I think that's pretty cool that we have that in place. I doubt that any future cities would be afforded that opportunity to be charter cities, especially not in today's world.
Probably not, but, yeah, it's like a legal loophole for.
We do have some, some interesting grace there to do some stuff, which is kind of cool. That was more of a comment, sorry.
Okay.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
One quick question, Phil, if I could. It's just minor. You'd mentioned that we're, people are allowed to remain anonymous. You can't require them to identify themselves. Are we at least able to see if they're constituent, if they live in the city?
Well, no. I don't, you don't have to tell, they don't have to say where they live, but non-resident, anybody can speak at the, to the council. You don't have to be a voter. You don't have to be a resident of the city.
Thank you.
Are we allowed to inquire as to whether or not they're a resident?
I think you could, you could probably ask any question like.
I guess, yeah, I guess you could ask that, sure. I'm not, you know, that doesn't affect the right to speak, so I'm not, I don't know when that would come up. I guess if they were complaining about something, you'd like to, well, do you even live here? You know?
Yeah, that was, yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Exactly.
See, I, so you, you could, yeah, I think that's fine. I don't think that's going to get anybody in trouble. But if they say, "I don't want to tell you," then you'd, I'd leave it alone.
Yeah, then the inquiry stops there.
But we always ask them to fill out a card, and I can't remember the last time somebody was unwilling to do that.
Sometimes people jump up impromptu also without, you know.
That's true.
Like Milford, yes, or we egg him to.
Yeah, invite him to.
You know, you were, you were talking about the time limit stuff, and it was something I just, just learned and experienced from over at IVDA, because we have quite a group that is now pretty angry, for whatever reason. It's really bizarre. Nobody even knows what the reason is, but they gather a lot of activists, and so we've had meetings where we have 60, 70 people show up, and, you know, 40 or 50 of them put in speaker slips, and the purpose is just so they can tell us how evil we are. And so, at one of the last meetings, under advice of council, because they all essentially have the same message, it's the same thing, we curtailed that to give everybody the ability to speak and keep the meeting timely, and we moved it down to one minute.
So there is a case out there that suggests a minimum of two minutes. That's why I said that. But Montclair had to do the same thing with the Hamas conflict. We were getting 60 or 70 angry people and two sides, and so that's, how do you choose who you allow to speak? So we just let everybody speak, but it was cut to two minutes.
I spoke to LA City Council. It was one minute.
Really?
And they paid zero attention to the speakers. The councilmen were wandering in and out and talking to each other, standing up, paying no attention to the speakers. One minute apiece.
Sounds like you might, well, I don't want to say this because then it might mean people at IVDA have a case too. I was going to say, sounds like you might have a case against LA City, but.
Actually, they listened to me because I got their attention, because I know how politicians think.
Donation, donation!
I have a bribe.
I'm in your district, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? And just jump right in if you have one.
Isn't there, there's a place where you can say, "This person will represent these certain ideas, and I can represent a lot of people?"
Sometimes the suggestion has been made. You want to, you are, you're all here on the same item. Is there a speaker or two you're happy with just sharing the views of everybody? And sometimes that works.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So we'll just kind of jump in then with questions as they come.
Yeah, because, yeah, I'll try to look that way, just, but jump in. I think I started to go backwards over here. So let's talk about, yeah, we did that, yeah, ethics. So obviously, ethics are very important. The second bullet, you are to participate in ethics training every two years. That's required by AB 1234. And I think you're going to be contacted in the near future. So you need to be independent, impartial, fair. You're here for the public good, not for personal gain. And your deliberations and how you arrive at a consensus and such must be conducted openly, unless legally confidential, certain closed session items, which we'll talk about.
Diane, for ethics training, is it just for council members or planning commissioners too and other committees?
Yes, yes. Commissioners as well. So, and certain department heads too. Must be, you must be fair, independent, and impartial. So the council acts in a, what we call the quasi-judicial capacity when they consider a CUP or other entitlement. And when acting in that capacity, they have to be neutral and unbiased, meaning you cannot have a personal conflict of interest, you cannot prejudge the facts, and you must be free of prejudice for or against any of the parties. So allegations of bias can occur if decision-makers meet with interested parties or discuss pending applications outside the public hearing. So a biased council member, and this, this is council, but it's also true of planning commissioners, would be disqualified from participating in a quasi-judicial hearing. So the best thing is to avoid being lobbied. And these meetings or discussions, you know, things are evolving here, are not just face to face. That can be emails, can be texts, can be other communications about city business. And all those things become public records, subject to disclosure, even on your personal So due process requires council members to base their decision on the administrative record presented at a notice meeting, not on outside information. Now, if you do learn of something, you should share that with the body at a, at a meeting so that that's being considered. So sexual harassment training, just like the ethics. It's required, it's mandated, and it's required every two years. And again, this will be coming up, and it will be provided by the city, but it can be done at home. Doesn't have to be done at City Hall. So we're going to talk about some conflict of interest. These are just the categories. So we're going to talk about disqualification from participation. So this is under the Political Reform Act. So you, if a public official has a financial interest in a decision, this, and public, so it's planning commissioners and city council members, if it is reasonably foreseeable that the decision will have a foreseeable and material financial effect on the official or the official's family, or one or more of the official's economic interests. Talk a little bit more about that. So the Reform Act says, "No public official at any level of state or local government shall make or participate in making or in any way attempt to use the public official's position to influence a governmental decision in which the official knows or has reason to know they have a financial interest." So the general rule, disqualification should occur if the proposed action could have a material effect, directly or indirectly, on an economic interest of the official, the spouse, or the official's dependents. So if you're disqualified, you cannot participate or attempt to influence any potential decision-maker. You have to announce and publicly identify your conflict. You must recuse yourself, and you must retire from the room. We see that happen with the mayor when the contract with the county for sheriff services comes up. It's up leaves.
Hold on. So now I just got to say this, because I do it because you recommend it, but it has zero effect on my income. So if the, if the city right now decided to contract to leave the sheriff's department, which I have always encouraged that the city look at the best price possible, it doesn't affect my employment, one way or the other. It does not change anything about me.
Doesn't change your salary.
Doesn't change a thing. But, but in an abundance of caution, which we always say, I do step aside and recuse myself from that, so.
Yeah.
And I have no problem doing that. I just, I have to put that out there because it just bugs me. And I'm sure it's the same for a lot of folks here too, because we do kind of the same thing with, like, the university, and it doesn't affect what.
Yeah, in fact, I was going to echo that. I mean, we're going way overboard. The university has a $3.5 billion budget.
There's also.
Financial interest in decisions about a building, whether my wife's salary is going to go up or down. So I think it's, it's ridiculous, to be honest with you, but I'll just leave it at that.
We're going to come up to common law bias, okay, that may cover those areas. All right. So, oops, how did I get here? Okay. Oh, okay. So then there are contractual conflicts of interest. These don't come up as often. They're called 1090 violations. But the rule is, public officials shall not have a financial interest in, oh, yeah, I was, let me go back for a second. I was going to mention, on the material, there are some presumptions of what is a material impact. For instance, if your property is within 500 feet of a project that you're making a decision on, it's presumed to be a conflict. If it's over 1,000 feet, it's presumed to not be a conflict. In the middle is the gray area. And then if you think you might have a conflict, it would be appreciated if you would contact me before the meeting and say, "Hey, I'm not sure if I've got a conflict," because then that gives me an opportunity to analyze it and determine what my advice to you would be. You ultimately make, make the decision, but I want to advise you as best as possible. It helps me to know in advance. So on the contractual conflicts, so we talked about the general rule, and it prohibits any financial interest of a self or spouse. I mean, you don't have the materiality, it's just any financial interest. And one example I was thinking of is if the public official is an employee of a contractor, of a contract provider to the city, that would be a 1090 violation, or could be. So if there is a true 1090 violation, the penalties are pretty severe. The contract is considered void, but the public agency gets to keep the benefit it received, and the official has to pay it back. So the city wins, the official loses, and then, of course, the serious one is the official may be banned for life from holding public office. So here's common law bias. So due process principles require a decision-maker to be fair and impartial when sitting in a quasi-judicial capacity, but I would say it in pretty much every capacity. There can be party bias in favor or against someone. There can be factual bias. You've learned, you've had ex-party means outside of, you've had communications with individuals outside of a meeting and decided you either really like them or really don't like them, or it just doesn't pass the smell test. That's such a legal concept. Okay. Then there can be conflicts of interest on incompatible offices. So you cannot hold two public offices at the same time if there's a potential or actual conflict in duties or loyalties. And the severe penalty here is that by accepting the second office, you forfeit the first office. So what are some examples? I just pulled some. An employee of a local agency and a city council member, okay? That's incompatible. A city council member and a county planning commissioner, that's been held to be incompatible. A deputy sheriff and a county supervisor has been held to be incompatible. And then travel is, is a big, can be a big concern. It's just a constitutional prohibition that you cannot receive free or discounted travel or free upgrades from any transportation company. And the acceptance of it works a forfeiture of office. It doesn't apply to travel benefits available to everybody, you know, reduced fares or something that's offered to everyone. But if it's only offered to you, that's a problem.
Isn't, isn't the forfeiture of office lifetime? You can't hold any office in California if you take a freebie on a bus?
It could be, yeah, it could be that broad. Yeah, it's a big one. It's just interesting that that's something they've carved out, that they take very, very seriously.
They did it because the crooks, the people influencing city or government officials were railroad barons. or government officials were railroad barons, when they put that law in place. So, it's all about railroads.
Oh.
But what's funny is, none of this, including the Brown Act, apply to the state legislature.
Very interesting, isn't it? Yes. So, we're gonna talk a minute about open government laws. Primarily, the Brown Act, but Public Records Act is, we're not gonna talk about it too much, but it's another example of open government. And you probably don't realize how many Public Records Act requests the, the city receives. Keeps the net nice and busy responding to those. So, open government laws, it promotes transparency, that's vital to generating public trust, and it requires public officials to properly notice all meetings, conduct meetings openly, allow the public to participate, and allow inspection and copying of public records. Yeah. I'm not gonna go into the, it's the Brown Act. Just what we were saying, it was also known as the Sunshine Law, for a while there. Elected, yes, must conduct their business in open and public meetings. And a meeting is any situation involving a majority or quorum of a public body. Okay, we know a meeting, we're having a meeting tonight, we know that. But, it's also when three of you are standing together discussing city business, okay? Well, you don't, of course, discuss city business with the three or more of you are together. And it applies, as you can see, to the council, commissions, a, a planning commission, and other, sometimes, committees and such. That's kind of duplicative. So, the, as we were saying, meeting can be any congregation of a majority of the body. And, it's just to, it can be just discuss, obviously, you're not taking action when the three of you are standing around somewhere, but you are discussing and deliberating, and that's all to be done at an open meeting. And it prohibits use of third parties or indirect means, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. Well, also, prohibits reaching or seeking collective concurrence. That would come up, too. So, certain things to know. You want to avoid unintentionally creating what's called a serial meeting. A series of communications that result in a majority of the body's members discussing, deliberating, or taking action on a matter of agency business. So, again, three or more, a majority. So, a series of communications of any kind. And again, that's including emails and texts, and also communicating directly or through intermediaries. So then, you see HubSpoke and Daisy Chain. So, HubSpoke is one of you asking, the mayor asking Dusty of what his thoughts are, then the mayor asking Ron what his thoughts are, and then Ovi, and then Rhonda, okay? That's the Hub and Spoke. The Daisy Chain is you to you to you to you to you, okay? So, those are violations, because you're doing the same thing. You're getting a consensus outside of a notice meeting. Now, you can certainly go to gatherings, ceremonial, or social service, social ceremonies and such, but, you're not supposed to discuss agency business. Another example I'd like to point out, you don't want to send a group email to your colleagues saying, you know, "This is my opinion on that matter," okay? Or, even Lorena should not send an email to the entire planning commission about another commissioner's concern about a project. So, that needs to be done at an open meeting. So, things like that can, you're not intending to, to violate the Brown Act, but you can. And, social media. I'm not a social media person, so I'm not gonna run afoul of any of this. But, it's the same thing. You have to be very careful, but there is an actual code section. Now, you can convey to the public, "Oh, hey, the city is doing this," or "The city is doing that," and, you know, that's fine, or answer questions. However, this code section, "Council members may not use any social media platform to discuss among themselves official business." "A member is prohibited from responding directly to any communication concerning a matter within the council's jurisdiction that is made, posted by any other council member." So, this is kind of an exception to the "It takes three" rule. The code section, so, a single contact between two of you, outside of a, of a social media context, is okay. But there's a specific rule on social media that says you cannot respond to a post made by anyone about city business. And respond, it includes likes, it includes emojis, okay? Those can be communications. And it specifically says that in the code section. I'll just read what it says. "A member of the legislative body shall not respond directly to any communication on an internet-based social media platform regarding a matter that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body that is made, posted, or shared by any other member of the legislative body." So, it just takes two on that one. So, what are the consequences of not complying with the Brown Act? Well, the decision can be considered void, null. There can be criminal sanctions. The DA can sue to remedy past and future violations. And then, there's always the attorney's fees, possibility, to those who successfully challenged those violations. There are exceptions, and you're all familiar with them, where there are authorized closed sessions. Okay, yeah, just-
Clarification, over here, over here.
Yes.
Mysterious voice. So, if, if all five of us are invited to a public forum on cities, and then we can all, if it's part of the program, we can all comment on city business. So, that's what that said. I know this doesn't happen very often, we're not that popular. But, if it's, if it's part of a otherwise not Brown Act-published meeting, we can jabber about city issues among three to four more of us?
Prob- probably if you're not trying to reach a consensus or something on the specific item in connection with the city, but, that's probably most likely what you would be talking about. So. I mean, it happens, I'm sure, all the time, but you do just have to be aware of it, and be careful about it. And I think it's best that you not do that. But you'd have questions for the speaker, or-
But that one slide, the slide before this one.
The third bullet point. No, it's not the third one, there's another one. We've lost it.
I think that was 39. Is there a faster way to get there?
I'll, I'll abandon my inquiry.
No, I wanted to look at that.
You could probably take this to the extreme, and talk about, like, campaigning and debates. Man, what if you had several council members up on a debate stage, and you're debating a specific issue?
But those are noticed meetings, too.
Okay.
I mean, Montclair does a candidate's forum before every election. I think the chamber, I forget who runs it. But it's, it's at a notice meeting. Provided there's no discussion of specific city business up there as part-
Out there done as part of the scheduled program. So, if there's a scheduled program for a public meeting that's not-
I guess it's, it's-
It's not Brown Act noticed.
Yeah. I'll have to look, what's in there.
Because it looks like an exception where you can violate the Brown Act at will.
Well, it's been noticed, and it's public, so I guess, yeah.
But it's not Brown Act noticed.
No. No, because it's listed as an exception. I'll have to go back and see.
Are, are you gonna get into some point here, maybe in a further slide, about recording these public meetings?
No.
Okay, so I'm just, I'm just curious, because that could be a way around having stuff recorded, is you could set up one of these things. Well, it was a noticed meeting, and we sat around and talked about city business, but there was no record of it. And I don't even know what the laws are on that. I happened to work at a, at a very interesting city that absolutely refuses to implement any type of recording of their council meetings. And I, I assumed that was not allowed, but it must be. I mean, they have legal representation, too. I guess the fact that the public can come to the meeting is what makes it open. But I just thought that was really interesting policy, that they, they choose not to, to do that.
Curious, what, I'm sorry, what constitutes a constituent? How, how does one define a constituent? Because that's an exception, which means that, if you take it an extreme, someone can come and complain to you, and you say, "I'm sorry." You have to complain in front of the whole council, I can't even talk to you.
No, you can, yeah, you can talk to a member, I, I said that-
What's a constituent? Is that a-
Well, it's, you can talk to anybody. You can talk to your neighbor, you can talk to someone else, but you can also talk to a constituent. Someone who lives in the city.
Okay, so constituent is someone who lives in the city, not does business in the city?
You know, I don't know what the specific definition might be on that, but I'm thinking they're talking about people with city business issues, that it's okay for you to have a one-on-one.
Yeah, because, you know, 10 slides back, it says you can meet privately with someone who has business in front of the city. Well, living in a city is a business, so it's almost like, it's, it's extreme. I mean, Dusty's pointed this out. Brown Act is the most dumbest hypocritical law ever. It makes no sense. You're not supposed to talk to someone, hear their complaints, but yet, you have an exception that allows, allows you to talk to them. So, which is it?
Well, you can't be making decisions, but you can talk to people one-on-one. You can talk to developers, one-on-one.
Yes, but at the same time-
Stay neutral.
Yeah, but it says, well, you're not supposed to be lobbied. Well, what, what constitutes lobbying? Someone who says the city's not doing their job, or the city's doing a great job? You know, and then, again, bias. What is a bias? Well, I'm in favor of you making sure you pay less taxes. Oh, that's a bias, you can't vote on that, because you already expressed your opinion. I mean, it goes through so many extremes, it's almost, it just makes no sense.
Alright.
I was just thinking that most councils would probably just sit here and play on their phones and listen to the presentation, but we're the council that's gotta, like, get into the weeds. Which is, no, it's cool, that's a good thing.
Paying attention. So, let's see, what time is it? There's certain rules to follow in adding non-agenda items, we've done that a couple of times. We have to determine that there's a need for immediate action, and that came to the attention of staff after the posting of the agenda. Done that a couple of times. So, here's our general rule, no action on any item that's not on the agenda. There are some exceptions. You can ask a question for clarification, make a brief announcement, make a brief report on your activities or the conference you attended. You can provide a reference to staff, ask staff to report back. You can take action to direct staff to place an item on a future agenda. Public comments. If it's about something that's on the agenda, you have to take the comments before you address that item. And again, matters not on the agenda can be scheduled anytime during the meeting. Brief responses permitted, very brief. I usually say not recommended, but we kind of talked about that. The closed sessions, personnel matters, conference with labor negotiation negotiators, conferences with council, legal matters, and real property transactions are the most common ones. So, confidential, confidentiality of closed-session communications, very serious, that matters discussed in closed sessions stay there, and do not, that they are not shared with anyone, because that just undermines, well, first, it's a violation. It can undermine settlement negotiations, too. If the position of the council is made public somehow, or on pending litigation, the council's position and instruction on the range of a settlement, if that gets out, that's, that's not good. So, the council may enforce the prohibition by seeking injunctive relief, or refer the members of the council who's disclosed confidential information to a grand jury. Penalties, invalidate any action taken. It's also, can be a criminal misdemeanor, can be a civil action for injunction, or the court can order the taping of all closed sessions, and then, of course, there's the attorney fees and costs. So, I think that's the last slide. Yeah, I probably, I was talking to Rich earlier, he goes, "Did you put some funny slides in there?" And I said, "No, I didn't." Next time. Any other questions?
Alright, any questions? Great presentation, thank you, very informative.
Thank you.
Now you know, so now when you're sitting over here, you know what it feels like to do the presentation, and you can help us kind of understand that.
Leave this here, okay. Well, thank you for paying attention, asking questions.
Thank you. At this point, I imagine we could probably take a break, because the council meeting's not scheduled till 7:00, and Planning Commission does not have to stay if they don't want to, although they're always welcome. So, we'll, we'll break for five minutes and come back at 7:00. So we'll break for five minutes and come back at seven o'clock. Okay, we're going to come back to our meeting, look over, make sure we're recording, we're good. We had already started with a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and City Council to go over a workshop presentation on the Brown Act. We will now, we did roll call already, so we will start with the invocation and pledge of allegiance to start off our council meeting led by Dr. Daley. Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
We're now going to start the public participation and public comment part of our meeting. Anyone from the public? Milford, you came in right at the exact time. Nothing today? Okay. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak, come on up. Seeing nobody, we're going to move on to our scheduled items. Under Section 3, Public Hearing and Scheduled Items, we'll begin with 3A, A Public Hearing on Council Bill R-2025-23.
Good evening. Tom wasn't able to be here tonight, so I'm going to stand in for him. I'm not quite as entertaining as Tom is, but we can all get through this together. So this is the Spring 2025 WeDebatement Timeline. We started around April, going out, doing our first inspections. Tom wanted to point out that did include giving some education on the palm trees, trying to get people to take a little better care of those. And later in April, we sent out our original notices with a deadline of May 5th to begin getting the work done. Eventually, as always happens, the work, they didn't take care of themselves. Our contractor started working mid-May, towards the end of June, it was all done. I'm sorry, towards the beginning of June, mid-June, some invoices went out. And we heard today to get approval for getting those put on the tax lien. Before doing that, though, it came up today that we're going to, and talking to Sonya, apparently, she said this has to be an action from the council. We're going to look to remove one of them from the list. So it was found that a notice to clean the property went out. The contractor went out to and cleaned it, and then an invoice was sent. The people showed up to and said, we never heard anything about this. And it turns out the notice was sent to the wrong address somehow. So they were never made aware of it. And so, to be fair, we feel that should be removed. So that is invoice number 25109 that we would recommend. That is removed from that list of the outstanding invoices. The other ones we would recommend move forward. And so, as mentioned in the staff report, is recommended City Council to accept the Spring 2025 WeDebatement Program Report, approve the accounting of costs, and adopt Council Bill R-2025-23, waive the reading in its entirety, read by title, only a resolution establishing the statement of expenses and imposing liens on the properties for payment. Can answer any questions? I think you guys have done this so many times, I don't know if you'll have any questions, but.
Well, it's a public hearing, so open the public hearing, invite anyone to come down and speak on this item. Seeing nobody, we'll close it and go to questions from the council.
Move the item.
Yeah, first and a second. And just, I'll put in a comment again for anybody that's out there watching. One of the things we've found from my experience here for a long time doing this is that a lot of these property owners choose to do it this way because it's actually cheaper. As weird as that sounds, they let us mow their grass and put it on their tax bill and they're okay with that. So.
And do we need anything special to poll that one, or is that?
The motion, I'm assuming, would be due.
Those clarifications, yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. So motion is to accept the Spring 2025 WeDebatement Program Report, approve the accounting of costs, adopting Council Bill R-2025-23, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, California adopting the report and statement of expenses for the Spring 2025 WeDebatement Program and imposing a lien upon property for payment thereof with the removal of invoice number 25109. I will take your vote, please. Motion carried unanimously, thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to 3B, which is a public hearing going over our five-year capital improvement plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, this is a nice picture of our new pickleball courts at the Leonard Bailey Park. And it's so popular that people have to wait in line for a long time to play.
And they play in the rain from the picture.
That's not rain, that's pickled juice.
So every year, I provide this five-year capital improvement projects plan. And we introduce, every year, through what we do with regard to different category and CIP, we broke it down to seven major categories, which is fleet, general buildings, parks, and recreation, sewer, storm drain, street, street light, and water. There's potential funding sort for these different projects. And again, there's a list of 31 of them, but sometime can be more, can be grant, developing impact fee, general fund, sale tax, tax donations. And so we use those to spend, to do those projects. For example, development impact fee for street improvement can only be used for street improvement. Even for the sewer can only be used for the sewer improvement to expand the capacity. If it's just a sewer repair, had to come, the fund had to come from the sewer fee. Okay, so there are different category for spending the money. So the first one is fleet. The way I broke this down is for the project that's, for the equipment that is listed in this fiscal year, '25, '26, this project are actually, is in the current budget year. For example, for this fiscal year, we will purchase a new skid steer loader, which is like a small bobcat that we can, you know, pick up dirt and dump dirt and dig a little bit, dig a hole and so forth, for the cost of $155,000. And then we're going to buy a new trencher, you know, a little bobcat trencher. When we dig the hole to lay the pipe and conduit and so forth. And then we planned it for the next few, next five years, four years, what we plan to do to purchase for the fleet and kind of a guideline, it not that we have to purchase it for that 2026, '27, or '27, '28. At least we plan for it. And so the goal is to plan for it and find the money. Hopefully, we have the money to purchase the equipment. Next is general buildings. Again, every year, we budget money for the facility improvement at the city hall, facility improvement at the city yard, the senior center, the library, and so forth. And I kind of lump, put it as a lump sum. And then in the budget book itself, we broke it down. For example, we had to purchase the acquisition for the city hall. We actually broke that down into different category. Park, okay? Every year, we budget the money for tree planting at various locations, art in public places. Because the pickleball court at Leonard Bailey Park is so popular that, at the request of Dr. Daley, we decided to build two more, sir. So we can have, instead of two, we can have four more. And this is in addition to the one that we already have at the Sisters Trail Park. And we plan to build more over there, too, so.
Where are the new ones planned?
At the Leonard Bailey Park, right next to the existing one.
So you're building four more next to the existing?
Right now, there's two, there'd be two more. And then we plan to have improvement at the Sisters Trail Park. This is the next phase for the Lennar Home. You know, we have to enlarge that park. And then, and then for the future years, we just budget for park improvement at various locations. Sewer, the good news is today, we just completed the sewer master plan. The last sewer master plan was completed back in 1998. So what the sewer master plan does is we look at the future improvement. For example, we have all the housing project that at the northeast corner of town. So back 27 years ago, we said, okay, we need to put more sewer pipe along Rayland Boulevard to intercept the sewer from this new subdivision, go all the way to the west side of town where we used to have our own sewer treatment plant and they had connected to the city of San Bernardino. Well, we don't have that plant anymore, so we put in a new sewer pipe parallel to the existing so we can handle all the sewer, all those new home, which was completed many years ago. So after completion of this new sewer master plan, we also look at the future years. What can happen to the vacant property that university owned? What's going to happen to the property, vacant property that the old drive-in theater and so forth? So we calculated the future flow for the sewer and to calculate, make sure that our existing pipe can handle this flow. If not, we have to increase the pipe size and so forth. In addition to look at the capacity, we also look at the condition of the existing sewer. You know, we actually videotape the sewer, do inspection, the sewer line. And if it have a sack or broken, we'll identify it and we'll put on the five-year CIP list for the future improvement. Yes, sir?
When you calculate the capacity of a sewer line, what viscosity do you use?
We have a calculation for that. We have, you know, if the house, we use five toilet to the household and so forth and calculate number gallon per minute and calculate that. And fluid mechanic, it's depend on the size of pipe, the slope, the velocity, so it's fun calculation.
And mass flow?
Yes.
And those wipes?
Yes, we have problem with those. And a lot of time is the sewer flowed downhill, but sometime it flowed uphill, so we had to put in the sewer pump. At our city, we have one sewer pump. And thank you for mention by the wipe. We used to have the sewer pump that gets stuck all the time, so we just installed a new sewer pump that came in with a blade, like a blender, and actually grind all this wipe and set it up. And we just completed last fiscal year. Storm drain, okay? Again, we are looking at the, because I live here in town, every time it rain, I had noticed where it's flood. So we kind of put in the five-year CIP because storm drain is expensive because you put in, you know, 36 inches, 48, and 52 and so forth. It's pretty expensive, so we have to plan for it. And we have done quite a bit of storm drain system in the city. In addition to storm drain, we're looking at basin, detention basin, the basin uphill. we're looking at basin, uh, detention basin, the basin uphill. A lot of you were here back in December of twenty-ten where we have a flood. So we use the storm rain fund to put in the basin of the hill and and so forth. Yes, sir.
You identified in the report that very and just described that some of the various sources of income to pay for these kinds of projects. Do we get support uh, from any agencies regarding storm control and storm drains?
No, sir.
So that's all on our budget?
Yes, sir. A lot of time is when we when we did the intersection of Redlands and California Street, we had to put in the pretty major box covert. Before my time, there was a a agreement, a three-way agreement between county flood control, city of Redlands and city of Loma Linda. They and was leaded by the county flood control. Well, it never get done. And and so I waited, we waited, we waited, we went to talk to them. Hey, do you have any money yet? No. So we did, we we did the project ourselves and and we completed that. So.
And back on sewage, just for a minute, it seems like an interesting topic, so. Uh, again, is that entirely on the city budget or are there any resources for that?
City budget. It come from two funding source. Okay, it can be developing impact fee. For example, all those home, new home, that new subdivision, because they want to increase the capacity, they had to pay for sewer capacity fee. Or if it's a sewer damaged, a crack, a sack in the pipe, then we use a sewer fee that you you and I pay every every month. We set aside and and fix this sewer pipe.
And did I understand you that I know about the relationship we have with San Bernardino and processing everything sort of. But did you say that 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 can't handle the capacity that we're gonna have and so we're building our own down here?
No, we do not build our own. What happened is we used to have a joint power authority between the city of Loma Linda, city of San Bernardino and East Valley Water District that take care of the sewer in Highland, okay? Uh, uh, ten years ago, East Valley Water District decided to build their own sewer treatment plant so that they can build more homes on the East Highland. And so by doing so, they reduce the capacity at a sewer treatment plant in the city of San Bernardino. So therefore, now they have more capacity now they can intercept more, they can accept more sewer from us.
In including current developments and future developments.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that's the one just across the freeway here?
Yes, in uh, across from uh, uh, Target in in San Bernardino. Right behind it.
If if you ever, uh, we we can set this up. If you ever want to go take a tour of East Valley Waters sewer treatment plant, it's very state-of-the-art, cutting-edge.
Costs a lot of money.
Costs a lot of money, but uh, it's it's pretty interesting. They're doing what CRNR is doing with that anaerobic digestion stuff. Um, and neutralizing a lot of their solid waste that way. It's pretty interesting. Yeah, well, not too far. Yeah.
Yeah, to the north side, north, north.
I was really saying that just to see if Milford would speak up and say anything. They're bringing, they're bringing, well, they're bringing food waste in to add to the the sewer waste. Yeah, no, no, no. But it's interesting because they're actually buying food waste from restaurants to bring in to add to the the sewer stuff to help digest it. It's very fascinating. If you guys wanted to, I'm serious, I can set up a tour for you if you want one. It's pretty cool.
Okay, so again, this is for the uh, the five-year CIP for the for the street improvement and pavement, we have rotation. This is similar to what we did a couple, a couple of weeks ago or a couple of months ago for the the five-year CIP for the measure I. Okay, and the water improvement, we plan to do the replacement of water meters, which we do that every years. Uh, replace the valves, upgrade our skater system. Our skater system is old, so we're gonna do the improvement and make it better. And uh, we plan to replace the pipeline on campus, a pressure reducing valve on campus. We have the Mountain View number six, replace the the booster pump at Lawton and and campus. And we plan to buy new generators and I work with Andy to get some more grant. And so we can use this funding as our local match. Okay, let's conclude my my five-year presentation. And again, this is booklet, nice booklet. Yes, sir.
Is my booster pump failing?
Why?
Campus and Lawton?
No, it's just always just needs to be updated.
Okay.
And then I found out that if if Edison turn off the power, you're not gonna have the water boost up to your rest, to the reservoir. But we have a, the new generator we bought, the four, we already installed it at the the reservoir up on the hill. So at least we have the water to boost it up and that come down. But the problem is we have to booster, because our well is in San Bernardino, had to boost it from there up halfway, one more than halfway. There's a booster pump at Mountain View, Lawton, Mountain View and Campus boost boost up higher, so. And the one by your house is not very far from your house.
And Edison sent us all an email, if you recall, in the last couple of weeks, that said they're gonna do a lot more power safety shut-offs.
Yes.
Jarb.
Yes.
Can I wanted to request, can somebody, either you or one of your staff, come back and do kind of a presentation of the parks? Like what the, cause there, it sounds like we have a a lot of pickleball courts. And so I'm curious as to see what is the lay of the land for our parks and recreation? And the playgrounds especially, coming back where we're at and maybe where we're going. Can someone come and do?
Sure.
And with lots of pictures, so I can see, you know, the ratio of pickleball courts to slides and
Yes.
swings and.
Well, when when we started with the city twenty-four years ago, all our equipment is the steel one.
The slides?
The slide is is very hot, you know, Milford should know.
We get third degree burns on those.
And then we only have two park. We have no tennis court, we have no basketball court, we have no tennis court and.
Pickleball wasn't even invented at all.
Right, so so.
Here's where this is gonna sound a little nimbey, you know?
Yes.
I I know there's probably no way for us to know, but it would be interesting to find out how many people come and use our parks from surrounding communities. We did a survey some years.
No, we, as a matter of fact, I just got a text from people that live in New Kiper. They came over and used our pickleball court last night and complained they had to wait too long.
No, 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 and and right? No, and there's there's a serious thing to be considered here as a council because we get a lot of input from our community members, from the people that live here that um, you know, our our parks are being used, especially the new ones. A lot of people are coming in and they're pretty packed, especially on holidays and stuff like that. I know there's no way to to really regulate that, but it's.
We've been going to New Kiper Regional and Ford Park for decades.
So.
All right, so you're saying we need ducks?
We're we're just as guilty in other cities as they are in ours.
I think just seeing, kind of seeing where we're at with the parks and the playgrounds and that. And then the vision for where they wanna go. What do they? Cause I I know you had a lot of things up there that you're listing, but even seeing pictures of what they have and having somebody describe would be great.
And and ask Councilman Ron Daly, who has been with our park and dedication committee for many, many years.
Maybe it's time for a membership change.
I would like to see, yeah.
Yes, okay, be happy.
It's good to drive around though too and see, I I agree with with what Councilman Riggs be saying. There's, there are a lot of people and I'm pretty sure that many of them.
Are not from here.
Especially up at Hold the Crooks.
Yeah.
But I see a lot of activity, cause I I, I mean, I'm retired, so I drive around sometimes and and uh, that park gets used a lot.
Especially like I think the birthday parties.
Yeah, yeah. But the kids' stuff and then uh, driving around the new developments over here, the one our homes, there's a couple of parks and most of the time, if you go earlier in the morning, it's, they're not being utilized much, but they get utilized quite a bit. My con- my concern is the amount of damage that we've seen and the amount of money we've spent on things in the last couple of years. So I would hope that in looking at those numbers, when you talked about throwing another couple hundred grand into uh, the new park, um, are we looking at ways to kind of fix the bathrooms and fix things so they're not destroyed like they constantly are? Cause I know we're spending a lot of money to fix that stuff.
It's unfortunate, the the old materials that we grew up, where we all got broken arms and broken legs and half of our skin, you know, that equipment, that lasted, right? Those merry-go-round, do they have the merry-go-round even anymore?
The biggest issue I think has been the bathrooms.
Oh, the destruction of the.
Luckily, we have a lot of volunteer inspector that call me and text me every time they cannot use the restroom when the restroom is dirty and then so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that the staff is studying some sort of a scheme in which we're gonna look at possibly figuring out a way to charge money for the use of some of our parks? We are not?
No.
Okay, I thought we were.
At one time, remember, at one time, our tennis court, we used to have a little box to to for people to pay to coin to turn on the light. And they just beat them up so bad. Every time we fix them, they beat them up again. So we just let it go and let the light turn on.
I don't know. I I think we we should look at that though, because I mean, we do have baseball fields where we charge people to use them. So I'm sure we can use the same type of mechanism for some of these newer parks, cause I've I've talked to people who live in that area and they have complained that most of the people who are using them are not residents. And it's unfortunate and, you know, it costs money to upkeep them. So if there's a way to recoup some of that money, that'd be great.
Of course, they get, the developer gets charged. They they put those in, developers resist putting parks in. But once they put them in, it's us.
Yeah, yeah. So once it's in there, it's our.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, so we have to pay money to take care of them.
Okay, this is a public hearing, sir, so.
Yep, so let's open, open the public hearing. Milford, you wanna talk about sewer, wastewater, any of that stuff? No? Close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move the item.
Second.
I apologize, I'm slow here. Uh, motion is to adopt council bill R dash twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, a resolution of the city council of the city of Loma Linda, California, approving and adopting the capital improvement plan for fiscal years twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Looking through this thing, initially I was distressed because when I saw the summary chart, I had all kinds of questions. Then as I proceeded and saw all the backup data, I mean, it's well done. But I it also, I think, puts the council on alert. We've got some significant expenditures coming up.
Yes.
That uh, we can't depend on outside sources to give us much help unless we get lucky with a grant and uh, the probability of that happening in this current economic climate is slim to none. So we've got some serious budgeting effort to put into this if we're gonna actually be able to in any remote way, follow the plan that you've designed.
Yes, and that's the whole idea of five-year CIP is we have planned for it. If we didn't have the money, we just move it in the future years. So.
I was wondering if Milford from Sanrio Valley Water Municipal Water District had some grant opportunities? All right, moving on to three C, which is um, a resolution initi- initiating annexation um, to our landscape mainst- maintenance district.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is the uh, we established a landscape assessment district for the uh, I think the track two, two zero four zero three and and two zero four zero four. And it's a two-track that to the north of the Korean church and to the south Korean church. And it's a new new subdivision that will require the landscape assessment district and the street light assessment district to to both track. So that will take care of three C, three D and three E. I'm sorry, can I can I go through all the same one, same time? So.
Are those still owned by the developer?
Yes, sir. Right now it's true mark.
Simple election then?
Yes, yes. And just let you know, they already uh, start doing the footing and putting the pad for the model for those homes. So. Yes, yeah, yes.
Question, how how Jarb are they gonna, so is the staff that you currently have is gonna be the ones then covering that? The landscape maintenance?
No, the landscape maintenance district for for this will be, we will contract it out. Yes, because this is this is a newer track. And so in addition to, we we as will do assessment every year and it does have cost escalation. The first fifty-eight uh, district is one we have a problem with, that we never have a cost escalation in it, so so.
So um, we're gonna set the public hearing for September ninth, so uh, this this now just requires a motion. Can, should we do them? Can we do them all together? Okay, we can. Anyone that wanna move three C D N E?
I'll move them.
Do we need to do the public hearing thing?
Um, we're gonna set the public hearing for September. Yeah, no, no, yeah.
So I'll second.
So we have first and a second?
Thank you. Motion is to adopt council bill R dash twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven and R dash twenty twenty-five twenty-eight. Correctly, a resolution of the city council of the city of Loma Linda, county of San Bernardino, California, initiating proceedings for the annexation of territories to Loma Linda Landscape Maintenance District number one as annexation number eighty, covenant point, track two zero four zero three and annexation number eighty-one, Haven at Covenant, track two zero four zero four, two zero four zero four. Determining that these proceedings shall be taken, taken pursuant to the Landscaping and and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two and the Right to Vote on Taxes Act, preliminary approving the engineers, engineers report and declaring the city's intention to order the annexations and offering a time and place for hearing and objections thereto. And to adopt council bill R dash twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine, a resolution of the city council of the city of Loma Linda, county of San Bernardino, California, initiating proceedings for the annexation of territories to Loma Linda Street Light Benefit Assessment District number one, Covenant Point, track two zero four zero three and Haven at Covenant, track two zero four zero four, determining that these proceedings shall be taken pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two and the Right to Vote on Taxes Act, preliminary approving the engineers report and declaring the city's intention to order the annexation and offering a time and place for hearings and thereto. Which the hearing is being scheduled for September ninth, the public hearing for September ninth, twenty twenty-five. I will take your vote, please. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Uh, real quick before we move off of this, I was gonna ask Jarb, are we seeing that developer still moving ahead? I mean, uh, everything I've been reading about the real estate market lately has not been great.
No, they they moving very fast. Again, the sale, the sale office is already, is already in place. They already started building pool permit to build the models for for both faces with track. Yes.
All right, okay.
And the same thing go through with Lennar Home, so they they're building too.
Yeah, but those aren't selling. I'm watching them. They're not selling. So I don't know. All right, moving on to section four, the consent calendar.
Move it.
First?
Okay, I'd like to pull two items, uh, for C and D with questions.
Okay.
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Yeah, it was seconded.
I'll third it.
All right, let's uh, let's deal with what you wanna pull first. Maybe we can just include it back in. What are your questions on four C?
Okay, on uh, C, the maintenance of hardscape on the on and off ramps at Mountain View, adopt a highway. When you say hardscape, is that the hillside with the rocks?
Yes.
And mostly weeds, but there's some rocks under them, I think.
Yes, so so I have to uh, call them up and say that.
Because they they do, I mean, I I have to go different places.
Yes.
That's a miserable-looking on-ramp, off-ramp.
Yes, right now we're responsible on the south side and then I call them and make sure that they.
I'm not even worried about the north side.
Yes, I will, I will call and follow up, sir. I saw that too. Yeah.
It's cheaper to put up a sign saying, keep your eyes on the road.
Could be. Do we pay them? Adopt a highway or do they have?
No, no, no. It's a company.
Convicts and stuff that come in.
No, that's a name of a company.
Company.
Yes. So we paid him.
Yeah. Okay. We'll talk some more.
Yes, yes, sir.
That's, I'm, I'm fine with it. And then on four D, and this I direct to the fire chief, seems like we've got a lot of different software we're using. Is there, if I see, if I'm on the fire department and I sit down, do I have to punch into the right software for what I'm doing?
No, no. So a lot of them.
Care software, there's standard operations software, there's dispatch. I understand that's different.
So, uh, several of those are part of our fire prevention code enforcement. And so there are softwares that, um, like for example, the COMK, that's code enforcement database. Dennis, that's not a software, but the fire prevention plan check, um, software, performance management software. So there, there are different things for like emergency response. Yeah, there's not really too many that are just standard for that, that you would need to do to respond to a call. Um, other than kind of what the, the program that the call comes in and that's actually built into our con fire cost. Um, all this other stuff is kind of more office-related, um, software that you use, um, back at the office. For just kind of maintaining records and processing stuff.
Okay. Thank you. I, I, it's kind of the answer I expected, but I wanted to hear.
Good question. Yeah, there's a lot of it.
Thank you. And then, uh, for the city manager on four C, we use Lloyd Pest Control. On four D, we use Orkin. Does, is there a reason that we should merge them and get a better?
One, one is for the building, uh, around the buildings. Another one for the park, the pest control, different kind of squirrel and ground squirrel and gopher and so forth.
Oh, so.
We've had pets.
Okay. I'm educated. Thank you.
All right. So we're good now. So we have a full motion on the full consent calendar and a full second. All right. Madam Clerk.
Motion is to approve the consent calendar as submitted. Please vote. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you.
I'll just make a quick general comment. Glad to see that we're going to bring on board a, a team to help us with grant writing. Very. So I was excited to see that. And soon we'll make some announcements on some great grants we are about to get from the federal government, which is very exciting. Thanks. No, actually, well, you'll be in for a little shock because we're going to get one of the highest amounts of grants in the county. So, but stay tuned.
Okay. Um, nothing listed under old business. Under new business, we have a report on our city projects.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, can you bring it up, please? There you go. So I prepare this, this map every year, but I think I know we'll bring it to the city council and, and to view to the public that what's going on within the city for this coming fiscal year. So I'm going to start at the, the northeast corner of town. So this is I-ten freeway. This is, um, California Street. Anderson, Anderson's right here. The hospital is right here. Okay? So what's, what's going on for this, this coming fiscal year? We, we just talked about at a northeast corner, we have a 213 unit senior apartment that is under construction. They, they start grading. And, and so, and then we have this in green oak wood parkland preserve. And also we have a, a central park that we are working with Lennar Home to do all those improvement. The, the fire station and the community building is, is in the central park. And the city will be working with the Lennar Home for the improvement and, and so forth.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Next to those senior apartments, that vacant area down there on California, I noticed that it just recently got fenced in.
Yes, right here.
Was that because of illegal dumping?
Yes.
You know, I actually, I actually got the license plates and caught some of those people that were doing that illegal dumping. Are we interested in pursuing that? Cause there's a lot of.
The property owner got it too. So, so some of the license plate and they've been dumping for a while. Anything we shared with.
Are we following up with that? Cause one day, one day I was driving by there and I saw, it looked like a construction crew out there.
Yeah.
Dumping stuff and I wasn't certain if that was authorized or not.
You can forward to me. You can forward to me. I can be happy to forward to the, the property owners.
I'll have to dig, dig up.
Yes. There's the same owner as a 213 unit apartment, the same property owner.
Okay.
Okay. Yes. Yes. Did you mean a traffic signal? It'll be, yes, we planned to put in traffic signal at, at California and Park Avenue. But, but what happening is we don't have the right of way yet. So, so, you know, to the west. Hopefully that's why we work with the, the property owner of the senior apartment that they can build improvement to the west side. And then also to the east, so we can have a full intersection that we can put in a signal. Similar to what we did at the intersection of California and Citrus, which is completed recently and, and Orange also.
The houses to the east that you're referring to, are we still in negotiations with them? That's been going on for years, has it not?
No, they don't want to sell. You mean that, that's southeast corner?
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
East, yeah.
Yes. Yes. So right to the south of that, southwest corner, it's a property that they want to build a daycare facility. They'll submit the plan to the planning department. We plan to put in the storm drain pipe at Citrus from California to Avalon every time it rained, this should be home.
What kind of daycare?
I don't know. Okay.
Children's daycare?
Have, have they submit anything?
Yeah, we have a preliminary application. I believe they're called the, um, something like TLC. Is their acronym?
That's probably, that sounds more like adult.
Was that property not zoned for retail? Do they rezone it?
It's mixed use.
So and then we have Lennar Home for the 103 unit condo and also 151 single family lots. So again, they still continue to build and, and going. We also have, uh, Loma Linda Hospital is working on Loma Linda Hospital rehab rehabilitation. They already submitted, uh, applications to the city. I talked to the engineer. So if they do that, then the city, what we will do is we will ask them to widen part of street fronting the property to the east and then ask them for additional right of way on the east side. And also on Citrus, we're also going to widen the street because we annexed the street from the county two years ago and the pavement is in really bad shape. So I plan to ask for the right of way dedication from the university on the south side and span the church on the north side. And then use the traffic mitigation fund to, to, to pay for the wire in the street and, and do a street improvement. We also are going to have the sixty-six.
Sorry, on that rehab hospital, they're actually breaking ground on that this?
No, no, not yet. Not yet. But we already submit the applications to the city.
Process. Okay.
Yes. So we have a sixty-six unit apartment just on the north side of Barton Road next to Alco A M P M. And this is TruMark Home, the one that used to prove the, uh.
Is that, is that in that, that storm basin?
Right. And the reason they can build that now because the, before they intercept all this water from the south.
But because of all the building there, it's not.
Because all this building here, they're putting the storm drain and put the pipe into the, uh, the San Tim channel now. So this is, this two-track here is TruMark. The Korean church is right there.
Yeah. Well, I wondered how they could use that storm basin.
Yes. So now, so now they can use it now because they reduce the amount of runoff that go north. So they intercepted over here. We plan to do a pavement rehabilitation on all this street at the southeast part of town, believe it or not, have been due. This is my third time now. Every seven years we paved the street. This is Linda Bailey Park. We plan to put in two more pickleball courts. We plan to have another thirty-six single, I mean, multiple, multi-family projects here. We plan to do a pavement rehabilitation on Barton Road from Mountain View all the way to, to California Street. We also have ADA ramps, a sidewalk improvement at various locations. The project's out to bit right now. We plan to do a pavement rehabilitation on Benton from, from Barton Road all the way to the end and, and Cole Street from here all the way to the end. This is, this is VA Hospital. And then we have a, um, five-story pediatric outpatient clinics right here. And they plan to build a seven-story parking structure just to the east. We plan to put in a, a new water main on, on campus from Barton Road to university. And then the school of nursing, they're planning to do expansion. Uh, we, we plan to do a pavement rehabilitation Anderson from, from, by the railroad track bridge right here. So Stewart Street all the way to Court and Court Street pavement rehab from uni, from Anderson to Ohio. And then we have a proposed gas station at the southeast corner of, uh, Ohio and, and Redlands Boulevard. Okay. Uh, we're looking at sewer capacity increase at, at, uh, Rancon and Canyada, this section of town. So there's a lot going on, uh, within our city. Yes, sir.
With all this housing development, um, I assume we're tracking our obligations to the state for low income, medium and so.
Yes. Yes. Lorena is doing that.
That's real quick. That's correct. We have to track it to our annual progress reports. Are we meeting it at this time? No, no, we're close. But we are tracking it.
Because pretty soon we're going to have to start going vertical because we're running out of dirt.
What, what about traffic flow with all of this? I mean, I know we're expanding California, but we're still adding a lot more traffic coming up California.
Yes. And then the city of Redlands is in the process of widening California Street on Redlands Boulevard going north. So that the channel that, that I did the improvement, the Bosco where they did do improvement, now they have to do the same thing, but to the north.
We paid for the last.
Which, which side are they going to widen?
The west side. And then the, the proposed hotel over there, right behind Chale Gas Station.
Yeah, it's interesting. I, I, the, the, I was at an event here over the weekend with them. The mayor of Redlands was invited to it also. And we were talking and he was talking about these hotels and he's, he was remarking how he didn't understand where all the need was coming from to, to make these hotels profitable because they're getting quite a few of them.
Yes, it's saturated. Yes.
And I said, you know, we've always been sold on ours that they're, they support the hospital and people come to the hospital, but I'm not quite sure that's the truth. I don't know who's living.
No, as a matter of fact, I'm glad you asked. I just talked to Haral Patel.
Yeah.
The guy who owned the full hotel because he just have a, a grand opening, uh, not very long ago. So I asked him, hey, Haral, are you going to build any more hotel in this area? He said, Jarb, no. These areas are saturated. And yes, but then there's people that want to build and, and he said that yes, they can build. So what will happen? All the old hotel will go out of business. And what's so bad about this old hotel, just like the hotel nearby a master dealership in Redlands, they turned to homeless.
Oh, let me, let me tell you, I've been there and that, I know we've all read in the, in the media and the press about how unsuccessful that was and how the developers took the money and ran and it was a big old mess. But I can tell you that the, the structure itself, it got completely refurbished, remember, to house all the homeless there? It is a mess. My detectives did a search warrant there the other day and I went with them just because I was curious. And I mean, windows are broken, trash, every, like it's.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know what they expected they were going to get out of it, but that's maybe a lesson for people that not to expect you're going to create Shangri-La and it's going to change behaviors.
I, I'm.
Yes, sir.
I still want to come back to the low-income housing because that's where our shortage is going to be, right? Or currently is.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. And so I, I'm interested when the mayor described that we're a charter city and therefore we don't necessarily need to comply with all of the laws of the state. Where is that line? I, I mean, I didn't know that before. That was new to me. So does, and I'm, I'm going to be negative and assume that doesn't impact our responsibility for.
I'll take it a step further, Ron. None of the other cities that are deficient like we are, like every city in this state is deficient for low income. The state's not coming after anybody. A lot of this is a lot of big bark. And we've talked about this for many, many years. In fact, we used, and I think he's a phenomenal attorney, but we used to have our RDA attorneys stand up there and, and tell us, you know, we're shy like two or three units to make, meet our number. And I think we have all said, we have taken more steps in this city than any other places. So if there were targets out there, we should be very low on the list.
Weren't there some lawsuits on this? I mean, didn't Santa Monica fight it and some others?
Yes.
And they lost, right?
They're still, still in.
There's enforcement going on by.
Legal enforcement.
Yeah, because cities are not.
No, there's, no, there's, there's, there's challenges that have been made where cities are fighting the requirements. But I don't think the state has come in and forced any, you can't. How do you, how do you enforce this rule? It's like what Dusty says all the time.
When we had the consultant here, I asked a similar question. And I use Pasadena as an example because we spend a lot of relatives and all down there. And I said, you know, what do cities like Beverly Hills and Brentwood and Pasadena do? And she says, interesting. You mentioned Pasadena. This was a workshop we did. And she says, I live in Pasadena and what they're doing is they're, they're buying, developers buy up older house, homes and then they go vertical.
Yes.
And that's happening right across the street from where my brother-in-law has a place. They're building, I don't, it's not real high, but several stories.
This, this, this might be a, maybe, maybe we'll go to lunch and have a conversation because I was.
I don't mean to digress, but.
No, no, no. I was.
Like crises and I'm just kind of waiting for the other shoe to fall and say, okay, now we've got to really work on developing some.
I read a really interesting article, Ron, that was, um, it was, uh, I actually believe it was like in the Atlantic or something like that, which is obviously kind of a progressive leaning thing. And they were talking about housing across the country and how, um, how the, this crisis is not, is kind of like, like a false crisis. Because there's, there's actual housing. It's just people don't want it. People want to live, it's, it's kind of a cultural thing. It's kind of a, it's, people want to live in new and nice. And so there's actually enough housing. A lot of people just don't want to live at certain levels of that housing. And there was a bunch of other stuff in this article.
Apartment vacancies are going up.
What, what's that?
Apartment vacancies are going up.
Yeah.
So there's definitely enough housing. It's just a matter of deciding whether you want to own or rent.
That's a whole other.
Tell you Pasadena, the market is, it's not as hot as it was, but there's many people, especially after the fires and so forth, that are wanting to move there. But anyway, thank you, Lorena.
That was just a report? Yeah, there's nothing for us to do on that. No, that was just a report then. There's no, okay.
Okay. I think that was the last.
I've got one other question regarding the scheduled fiscal year and city projects and so forth. And I, I think I asked this before, but I don't remember what the answer was. What is our, how much are we projecting our deficit for this fiscal year is going to have to come out of the general fund? Roughly.
Well, so far it's close to half a million and we don't have the labor negotiation done with the team, sir, yet.
Okay. Thank you.
But I think we, we ended last year with a million dollar deficit.
Okay. Um, that's the last on our agenda, except for reports of council members, reports of officers.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I just make a comment just for clarification with the city attorney? Going back to agenda items regarding the annexations. It was, we had two separate items for the LMD, but they had the same resolution. So I only read the title for. So I only read the title for the one and then the street light was a, a different resolution. So I just wanted to make sure that was correct because I only read one title for four, for, I'm sorry, for four, for three C and three D because they were, they are the same resolution. And then for, three E was a different resolution for the street light. So just, I only read the two titles and hopefully that was correct. I wanted to just clarify that to make sure.
Two resolutions, so I think that, I think that's fine, but that's why I thought maybe you had missed three E and then, but you did read.
Yes, I did.
Yeah.
Yeah, because three C and three D were the same resolution, they combined them, but we did separate reports.
So that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we're adjourned. Next meeting is in August.
August twelfth.
Milford?